Heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy and your love. We thank you for your guidance and pray that you'll be with us tonight. Help us in our decision making so that we are making the best decisions for the city of Perry and its residents. We ask this in your name. Amen. Okey-dokey. By the clock on the wall, it's seven o'clock. I call the meeting to order, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Devin, would you do our roll call, please?
My count?
Here.
Chad Fuller. Mindy Gallady here. Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Sue Yehman.
Here.
All to come forth except council member Chad Fuller.
And looking for approval of our agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And looking for reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. That was April 7th.
Move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the April 7th, 2022 regular meeting. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from April 7th regular meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Looking for any preapproved reports or presentations. I'm not aware of any. So we'll move into public comment. John, did you have a public comment, or are you just gonna have Devin read your thing that came? Whatever you want to do is fine.
No, maybe I'll comment at the end if you still have a...
Then you're welcome to do that.
Right. No, I submitted something in writing, so that's my...
She's gonna read it. Is that right? She's not gonna read it.
She doesn't need to read it.
Okay.
But I intended it to be public and available to...
Okay. I think everybody got a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'll turn it over to you, Devin, for communications.
First communication was to the mayor. Dear Sue, please accept this letter as my notice of resignation for the position of ordinance enforcement officer for the city of Perry. I am suggesting that I be relieved of responsibilities of OEO on May 2nd, 2022, two weeks from April 18th, 2022. I am grateful for the opportunity to serve in this capacity and appreciate the trust you have had in me. I will be happy to help with finishing any projects that are pending, and will do whatever I can to assist the one who is doing the position. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve. Respectfully, Leland Scott, ordinance enforcement officer, City of Perry. And the next one is, there is an email that council should have all received. Just make sure that you have a copy of it from John Listky, and it says some suggestions and recommendations of the current ordinances that are being asked to consider for adoption to make.
Steve Wallace?
And that's all that comes out, yes.
Okay. The mayor reports. I have just a few things to update you on, and one is from the Michigan Municipal League that ensures our vehicles, the city's vehicles. We got a check for $8,000, no, excuse me, $5,280. That's saying everybody got reimbursement from overages and the insurance fund, and that's for that. So that's nice. Not very often that we just get money. And then I also have a report, just a brief one, from our grant writer, James Hisson. He has communicated to me that there was legislative grant money available, and I put him in touch with Kyle because of the nature of what was allowed in the grant, and he responded with me after speaking to Kyle. In total, we are asking Representative Molinar to consider a $130,000 request that includes the cost of the access control system, that security system. Did he talk to you about that too? Oh, yeah, because you supplied the letter.
Yep.
Thank you. That is a nice letter. As well as a backup generator for City Hall. It's hard to say how exactly his office will select projects among the several dozen they will receive, but at least we'll have something in the mix. And Bob did provide a very nice letter in support of that, indicating in the letter that the City Hall could be an emergency location for people to come to, and so the backup generator would be very much needed in that type of a situation. And in regard to our four charter amendment proposals that we would like to put on the ballot, Justin English, our attorney, has sent those charter amendment proposals on to the Michigan Attorney General's Office for review as required by the whole city. So those are sent, and we got actually a confirmation. He sent them today. We got a confirmation this afternoon from their office saying that they received them. So joining on the spot. And I'll just remind the public of our Let's Make May Cleanup Perry Month, and their information is all on the city website, on Facebook, and on the board at Carls. And if you have any questions about that, feel free to call City Hall. And that's all of my reports. In reference to Leland Scott's letter, I did get hold of Mindy and let her know that was forthcoming so she could get things rolling. So I'll leave right into you for a committee report.
So we have a job opening for ordinance enforcement officer, and this is a part-time position up to eight hours a week, and the pay rate is $20 an hour. So submit your applications to City Hall, and I, if understanding, Devin has posted...
I was waiting for you. It's ready to go.
It's ready to go.
The mayor post is ready to go. The mayor's approved it. It's...
So I know I would like to get somebody as soon as we can, especially when we're having our cleanup time. It would be nice if we could fill that position quickly. So anybody interested, just get ahold of City Hall. Thank you.
I also have a report from McQueen House Committee.
Okay.
And we didn't have a meeting, but I had opportunity to see Billy Rowback, the president of the Historical Society, and he gave me a flyer, and this is posted at Carls, and we are putting it on the city website, and I'm sure it's on the Facebook and website for the McQueen House as well. I went in, and it is just absolutely beautiful. There's some of the furniture's been placed, and curtains, and like, it's just so nice and fresh looking in there. And they also... Oh, and this farmer's market starts June 11th, from 9:00 to 12:00, and it's gonna run all summer, the second Saturday every month. There will also be an arts and crafts show on September 17th, from 9:00 to 3:00, and he spoke of a number of things that are in the works for activities at the house, and they will be opening soon for tours, and it'll be all ready, and it's just awesome. So they are also having a cleanup yard on Saturday. So anybody that wants to come rake, we're gonna be on Saturday. It's supposed to be nice out, bring your sunscreen and water, and rake.
So two days from now, Saturday?
Yes. This coming Saturday.
The National Honor Society advisor contacted me a week ago, asking for the names of people within walking distance of the high school who would like to have their yards raked, sticks picked up, stuff like that. On Monday, the 25th, they're using that for a community service day.
Okay.
I don't know if maybe you contacted Kate Smith at the high school, and I have her number upstairs, so if you do want to do that, it might be something that if it still needed some stuff done, they would still be able to walk on over to the McQueen House and finish up, or, you know, whatever. Or maybe if it rained on Saturday, they could do it on Monday. But we did have four people that would like to have them come, so I don't think that's gonna take them all day though on Monday, so they should have time.
Do you know if she has any seniors, juniors, or seniors?
Class-wise, you mean?
Grade.
Grade-wise? I don't know.
And the only reason why I break it up is that they're at the drive-in, and as long as they have their paper and the future proves that event, they could actually meet them on Saturday, possibly.
Oh, that could be.
And then you're gonna... We start deciding if we mark off the term, and it would benefit them.
Yeah. Okay. Just let her know you guys are gonna be there Saturday. Maybe some of the kids would come and get credit for that.
Yeah. Okay. Great. That's good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Okay. Any other committee reports?
Just a couple of quick things. One is not a committee, but the Planning Commission will be holding their next meeting, May the 2nd, at 7:00 PM here in council chambers, and we have Mr. Chuck Donaldson coming from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to speak with us about a RRC, another acronym, to see whether or not it can be a useful tool for the city as it embarks on a updated master plan. I think I mentioned this before, but any council members that are available to attend, it would be beneficial, because if we elect to move forward with it, there will need to be ultimately a resolution passed by the council to get the process actually formally started with the M E D C. So that's coming up on May the 2nd. We have our next regular, our next scheduled ordinance meeting, next Wednesday, April 27th, at 10:00 AM here in the council chambers. We've got a couple of items to cover on the medical marijuana ordinance. There are a couple of resolutions that we've spoken on briefly that we need to review the drafts in preparation for those coming to council for ultimate review and approval. And we commented earlier, Mr. Listky had provided some public comment input. We would like to take the opportunity at that ordinance meeting to review those and try to treat those as some continuous improvement opportunities to the ordinance in the event that we do agree to move forward here later on in the agenda. We have seen him are going to do an in-depth discussion and review of those to see whether or not we can come up with an update appropriately.
Very good. Any questions for Larry or for Mindy? Either? Other reports then? Bob, you wanna tell us about your man?
Oh, it's just, I'm gonna lay it out. John asked me to remind us that...
Oh, okay.
This first time is slipping by.
Yes. But remind everybody of that workday.
May 14th, Saturday, at Jubilee Park. Come to work, gloves, hat, water, work clothes.
You wanna show the camera your man?
My map?
She'll put it on camera.
Subject to change. There may be, absolutely there'll be some tweaks once I figure out exactly where it all goes. You know, John wants to get started on it. I emailed the company today about the equipment and haven't checked the emails since then to see if they respond.
And that work session starts at 8:00 in the morning, correct?
8:00.
Any other committee reports or questions for Bob? Good. Moving on then, presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
It's been moved by Larry, seconded by Mindy, that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have no old business, but a few things under new business. The first of which is discussion is needed on the Ross DeLuque Perry's Pride Award map. We've got, courtesy of Devin, one from last year and one to fill out as a proposed mapping for this year. Devin, do you wanna take over there?
So Mindy is familiar, Larry... Mike, were you familiar enough with this?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with it?
Yeah, that's fine.
So the only one that may need a little bit of updating would be Chad. So it can stay the same, I believe, being that coffee is not here, Chad would fit in there, or you can change your months and your sections up. So I didn't want to assume, so I gave you last year's, and we'll go from there this year, okay? So it's up for discussion of which sections that you would want to pick for the Perry's Pride. That's your residential award, and it's all about residents putting pride in their overall scene of their, like, switters. Painted up, cleaned up, bushes, shrubbery, all that kind of stuff. And also the consideration for council, it's typical that you also do the Put Your Best Face Forward, which is one of our local businesses that you'll do the reports. I've given you the, kind of the guidelines of both on how you pick them. We have the plaque upstairs if you're curious of whose one previously, so that you don't have, maybe you can try to use some change around and not, you know, repeating the same people.
I think we've got the last couple of years also posted on the website in terms of who the winners won.
Well, we've gotta get going on May, and I've got time, so I'm, I can continue with May unless someone else wants it. If someone wants to trade, I can join in.
I'm good with any of them.
I'm good with what's on there now.
Yeah, let's... Maybe next year we'll decide to change. You know, right now, I think we've only each had this one year, so I'm fine believing it, but as is.
Shall we just ask Chad then if he would like to just take that area of the October...
Doesn't really have a choice. Because nobody's... The only... The only thing we do is...
That's what happens with this.
Okay, so on that, no. The only thing that Chad might have an issue with, maybe he's gone all of October. So if somebody would respectfully maybe change a month if that month doesn't work for him, would be the only thing that makes the recommendation.
Well, I was gonna suggest it, but I thought maybe that was...
Oh, I thought you meant the section two and a month.
No, no. Everybody's kind of put it that way. But no, that's fine.
He's got kids in school, he'll be around.
Okay. If he may, and so I can get him.
You could. He might be calling you and saying, can you trade me? He could be.
So you're gonna do, you're gonna say...
I'll do May and get him. All right. So just for the public then, I will let them know that, show the map here if you want to zoom in on that and the sections. So we have May, which is the old subdivision, and then June is over in here. July will be up in here, this section, and then August, very late. September, the older section, and then we have on the side of the trucks, October. So residents, take pride in your place, and they'll be looking and finding the best one.
Thank you, Devin. Moving on to our next item of new business, possible adoption of the zoning ordinance amendment number 360. We had our full reading of this ordinance last meeting, and making the motion as, passing it as it was read, doesn't mean it can't be updated. That certainly can happen, so just be aware of that.
I move that zoning ordinance number 360, which amended zoning ordinance regarding medical marijuana, and which was read at the April 7th, 2022, to regular council meeting, be adopted.
Second. Motion by Larry, seconded by Bob, that the zoning ordinance number 360, which amends the zoning ordinance regarding medical marijuana, which was read at the April 7th, 2022 regular council meeting, be adopted. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the possible adoption of ordinance amendment number 361 regarding medical marijuana. That was also read at our April 7th meeting. Again, keep in mind that if there are updates that need to be made, they can be made in the future.
I move that ordinance number 361, which amends ordinance regarding medical marijuana establishments, and which was read at the April 7th, 2022 regular council meeting, be adopted.
Second.
I'm gonna give that to Mindy, because she lost out last time. Okay. Motion from Mike, seconded by Mindy, that ordinance number 361, which amends ordinance regarding marijuana establishments, and which was read at the April 7th, 2022 regular council meeting, be adopted. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So both ordinances have been approved by council. According to our charter requirements, they must be 30 days before they literally go into effect. So we won't be accepting applications until...
A resolution.
I'm sorry?
You're gonna pass for a resolution.
I'm not understanding what you're saying.
To accept applications, council's gonna formally set a date to a resolution.
Oh, that's right. Yes, I, thank you for reminding me. I forgot that. We are gonna move on then to the possible resolution. Excuse me. We're not gonna do that today, though.
No, I'm just saying. You were given a date, and I, I wanna say the resolution said your date.
So after our next ordinance meeting, then we will present to council a recommendation on when we will start accepting those applications. But it does have to be 30 days from now before it literally goes into effect. That was the point I was trying to make, so... Is that very confusing? Do you want Larry to say that so it's not so confusing?
It'll be published in the local newspapers, and then 30 days before it actually becomes effective, which roughly will put us right about the first of June kind of timeframe. The resolution Sue spoke of will in fact define specific date, times, et cetera, and how to go about the whole activity. But ballpark, we're looking at about the first of June from an application perspective. Make an official resolution in the upcoming meeting.
For anybody that's interested in reading those ordinances or reviewing them, they are available now on the city website, so feel free to go there to read those. Any other discussion or comments regarding those motions? We'll then move on to the possible resolution adoption. This is in regard to the waiver of penalty to transfer affidavit. This has been on the books for some time, but not typically, I don't think ever, has the fee been charged if it's not recorded. And so this is just waiving, charging a fee if it doesn't get recorded any amount of time described. Any discussion on that? This is, comes from our assessor.
So they haven't been charging fees?
They don't charge a fee unless it's late, is what the requirement says, but we've never, according to Eileen, charged the fee. So rather than have to dismiss it every time, let's just change the ruling and say they don't get charged a fee if it's late.
So we've never charged it, but it should be. Because I think there, I think there's a few came up that they had transferred that were not registered in the board review. I think I remember something about that.
Well, that's certainly...
Maybe we should be more sure of our decisions better, or more consistently is a better way to say it, perhaps.
That, my experience when I was in real estate, which I'm not anymore, I'm clothed by that, but when people close on the purchase of a home, they typically are closing with a title company, and the title company is, has been, in my experience, responsible to record that.
Correct.
So if it doesn't get done by the title company, then who's gonna pay that fee? I think has been the problem. Somebody says, oh, it didn't get recorded, but I didn't know I had to. The title company said they were going to. Please don't charge me, you know, a fee, because I didn't know. You know, that, that comes up. So just throw that in there for consideration.
I don't know enough about it to say.
I don't know about you.
Have an opinion yea or nay, honestly. I, you know, I don't want anyone to pay a fee if they don't have to, but I also want to have some sort of limited penalty if they're... And I know most people don't, it's not underhandedly, but, you know, they're transferring, say, I rent the own, they didn't really transfer the, so they're, they're manipulating the system.
And most of them don't even know it.
Correct, but...
Yeah.
And I don't know how to solve that. I just, I don't wanna remove something that they give us fee, and then we're just gonna remove it. I, again...
So should the homeowner, new time, first time homeowner that don't know the laws be responsible if the title company says they should do it? So if we're, shouldn't we be going after the title company instead of the homeowner or the buyer?
Yeah, I don't know how many title companies, if they're reputable, are forgetting that, but is it the title companies forgetting to register the transfer or transfer, or is it people who are doing the, you know, the individual, they're not going through a title company, they're just a rent... Oh, because I know you can do that. So, and again, I don't think it's underhanded, per se, but I don't know. Again, I'm just, I have, I don't know where to land on this, because, and I, again, I don't want to charge anybody anything that they shouldn't have to, but...
Would you like Eileen here? And we can bring her to the next meeting, so you can ask her?
I'd like to have some explanation.
Because she should be able to give you some examples. I can't give examples.
Right. You just know how often this comes up.
Yeah.
Right.
What exactly we need to... I mean, it's in July, more than 45 days.
Right.
Right.
Or they delayed?
Or they just not doing it.
Six months or, yeah, not at all, right?
I'm gonna take a stab in the leg of electronics.
Paper supply, this is a piece of paper.
Well, let's do that then, we'll ask Eileen, our assessor, I think, instead to attend the next meeting to explain this to us more clearly and answer any questions that we have. So we will.
No action taken, I'll take it.
Do a no action taken and pick it up next. Thank you. I do have an appointment. Leland Scott, even though he has resigned as ordinance enforcement officer, is continuing his position as the, I forgot what he is. Zoning administrator, zoning administrator. And as zoning administrator, he does chair, well, serve on the Perry Building Authority Committee. His term expires this month and I talked to them, asked him if he was willing to continue to serve on that and he is. So I am appointing him for another three-year term to the Perry Building Authority.
I move that we accept the mayor's reappointment of Leland Scott to the building authority for a three-year term expired May 2025. Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Mike, to approve the appointment. All those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I'd like to just let you know also that I did create the lottery committee, the ordinance committee was discussing who would determine the winner of the lottery for the medical marijuana license. And so we discussed lots of options and I came up with mayor, treasurer, and the chief of police to serve on that committee. So that is taken care of. Next on our agenda is possible invoice approval. This is for IT Wright, Megan, uh, no, Devon knows about this, so I'll let her explain it.
So we've been with IT Wright before my time, that's how long we've been with them. We had a standard agreement, we had it for about twenty years, that was for $3,500, and then we had to add up other items like antivirus, the desktop service, the server, the backups. This is all security-related items that have added the price up. We were at five thousand with all of those and then we went to a two-year contract and it went up to, I think, six thousand seventy-two, about that. So because it had been twenty years, that was a thirty-three percent hike and I didn't like it, but when I averaged it out, they were asking about a six percent raise each year or so. Council said okay with that. So that was two-year locked-in contract and I have to admit, this invoice in front of me, I was a little frustrated with because first I reached out in February to let them know that our contract was expired. And they assured me, the salesman that I had talked to, that they would get us a new contract for you to consider. Instead, I got the cart for the horse and I got the invoice. I have talked to them, so I have that in front of you. And then I got a call from Larry and he made a very valid point, so now I have a little bit more investigating going on. When we went with Shoemakers for our website, they took on the web hosting, which is a $500 fee, which IT Wright is always carried. And I believe, even though it's not written out, that it's in this, that that should be reduced by five hundred, that's seven thousand one hundred and ninety-two. So we can either, you can talk about it, ask me some more questions, no action taken. I have put a tentative motion pending the invoice is reviewed and is not including the web hosting, so you can do what you would like with it, I'm asking, because of the service they provide and the security that at this time, that if it's not approved at this meeting, that once I get that cleared up, the next meeting it will be considered.
This is a one-year, well, they didn't send you a contract for one, right?
This would be a one-year.
And the last time we signed it was two years for roughly two thousand dollars plus?
Yeah, so they went up seven percent. And they're going, they're new, so they verbally told me what the contract's gonna look like. It's either gonna be by three percent or CPI, whichever's higher. And CPI this year is higher than three percent. So we're running into it with everybody, I can't really argue with the increase by that, but I am frustrated that I don't have a contract for you guys to even consider to put some details on it. But they know I'm upset and as soon as I call them to let them know that there isn't a guarantee that this is even gonna get considered tonight, a secretary delegated, can't give me any answers, but so she's right on it, but I haven't heard anything back yet.
Has it hurt anything if we wait till next meeting?
Not if I have anything to say, I've already warned the mayor that I will have probably a moment home when I talk to them and get frustrated. Have I ever had this problem before? No. Have they expanded and whenever you expand, you get new people and you hire and they don't work the same as you're used to, that's exactly what's happening. So I'm trying to be patient with their changeover, but that's, but that's still, I still have right not to be happy for the city of what they're doing right now.
Do you think it would be prudent to send a partial payment and tell them we need to see the contract and we need the breakdown and we need to make sure that we're not being charged for services we're not getting before we pay the rest of it? I mean, I don't want them to shut us off, that's the.
What I'm saying is it'd hurt anything if we waited.
Is the five hundred the only piece, Devon, that you can identify that probably is there would be doubled up for?
That would be the only thing, because if you do seven percent with the rate that we were at the last two years is exactly the amount it should be, then I'm only questioning that five hundred at this point.
Why don't we consider passing a motion in amount of seventy-one ninety-two minus five hundred?
Okay, I put pending the invoice be reviewed and is not including the web hosting. If you want to say without it, then that's fine, so do you wanna make that motion or?
I think the possible motion is okay.
Okay.
That way it's at least the money is there, it's been approved, so if you have to make the payment right away, it's done.
Sure. Dan Ecclestone, which you might even remember.
I remember, yeah.
He's still the big guy on it and because they started out small, if you all know, they're just out from Bath, and he also created a sister company, B S and A that we have. I will get ahold of Dan and his right-hand man is Randy Allen right next to him and like I said, I appreciate they now have a salesman, but this gentleman is doing a no-service and so I'm trying to be good, but I'm about ready to call the people in. So I don't think we're gonna get any kind of service cut off, honestly. And if not, you'll just see my ears today. Too many people, too many, too many desks going on, so I just gotta get to the right, the right phone number to hear you.
I move that we approve the IT services from IT Wright, VC three company, for an amount not to exceed seven thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars, pending the invoice be reviewed and it is not including web hosting.
Second.
We have a motion by Steve, seconded by Mike, approving the IT services for an amount not to exceed seven thousand one ninety-two with the invoice to be reviewed, to be sure it's not including web hosting. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thanks for looking out for us, Devon.
And thank Larry, because I was, I've been fighting the contract and I also have to report that, I mean, okay, can I do this?
Sure, yeah, no problem.
Shoemakers also sent us their invoice and I've also been in communication with them a couple of times, letting them know that they under invoiced us. So we asked for more and they didn't bill us for everything. It has been long enough, I wanna say that invoice was done two months ago, talked directly to Kyle, which we all know is the president, so it's not like I talked to the side to let him know that, he agreed, yep, he said, you know, I think, he said, yes, I don't get too many calls to say, somebody tell me that I under billed them, I'll send you over an invoice and I haven't. And so I felt bad and you see in the bill list that we're at least gonna pay them what they've invoiced us so far. The contract states what it states, if they give us another invoice, well, they deserve that money, but I don't want more to do than to pay them at least what they've invoiced us. So I joked around with the mayor, I said, they're kind of about the same on the difference. I said, so we're not paying one because they didn't invoice us and we're talking about not paying the other because they are billing us. So we will get this all figured out, but both are techies, maybe that's the problem.
Another part of the conversation that Devon and I had, she referenced that might be that as a technology committee, they hasn't met in a while, in our next meeting, we may wanna consider, do we want, do not approve this contract year, but before next contract year rolls around, go up and see who else in the marketplace provides the kind of services that IT Wright provides, just to make certain that we're market competitive and we're getting the services that we should be getting for the city, for the money we're paying.
I think that's a good idea, especially if they know we're looking, they might be negotiable on their contract if we're satisfied with their service, but if, if there's other companies out there that are significantly different, we need to be aware of that, I agree. Any other discussion regarding that? We'll move on then to any other business that may come before council. We heard the letter of resignation from Leland Scott, but we do need to accept that.
I move that we accept with regret the resignation of Leland Scott as ordinance enforcement officer and extend our appreciation for his service.
Second.
We have a motion by Mike, seconded by Larry, to accept Leland's resignation with, and we'll extend our appreciation to him for his service. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Any other business that may come before council at this time? Did you wanna make any public comment, John?
Well, I just wanted to congratulate you all, you've been working so hard on this. I think we've made almost every meeting between my son and I, I think you guys have a great chemistry in the planning commission and you've been thorough and transparent and very much appreciate it, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, very nice. Council discussions and observations and all? I will remind us of our budget workshop for Monday evening and I will let you know that I sent out an email to all the department heads and said, please, please, please review your budgets, know that we've gotta come up with a whole lot of money and prepare ourselves so that in next year's budget, we're not continuing to be in a deficit. And I went into detail with them as to how much money we needed to come up with and I asked each department head to report directly to Megan so she could plug that into information sheets that you'll all have Monday night. She has done that and she went over it with me today. I think we can be very happy and pleased with our department heads. They took it upon themselves to schedule a meeting with the health insurance provider, the carrier, for the employee's health insurance and they have put a proposal together, two options for changing their healthcare. And I have asked Megan to cut that cost of living allowance in half, we'll talk about how we wanna address it, but, and there were some other changes too that we'll go over Monday night, but I think we really owe a debt of gratitude to our department heads, they've really stepped up. Any other items for the next meeting that you would like to see on the agenda? We have something, oh, is Genevieve coming?
No, we're gonna have Genevieve either the second meeting in May or the first meeting in June, she's gonna get back with me, Ellen or. She was going to be here tonight, they're looking at some changes in the way that the food bank organization operates and she asked to defer until after they had their council meeting, if you will, and have got those changes basically agreed upon and then she would come in and share proposals with us.
Great, sounds like they're doing a good job. Any, anything else that we should be aware of for the next agenda?
No action taken.
Yes, that's right, so no action taken, I've been asking Eileen to come.
Is that our first meeting in May?
Yes.
That will be every first meeting in May, the ambulance special assessment comes before council to review whether it should be increased or not. Typical rule is that we reach out to the letter chief and get his recommendation. I have reached out to Guy Hubbard and he recommends that there be no change. If you are familiar with it, it's currently at sixty-five dollars and so remain unless you feel that there should be a change. If you do, please let me know sort of later so there'll be a process. You can increase it up to ten percent is what the original resolution states. So that will be on your meeting next. Was it May fourth?
Is it May fourth, I don't have a calendar.
It was the second.
I thought the second was planning commission.
Our next meeting, May fifth.
May fifth, yeah.
Sorry.
At seven fifteen, that one's actually has a timeline.
Any other items for discussion? If not, at seven forty-eight, this meeting's adjourned.